Welcome to Muddy River News this week. I'm Bob Goff. We are going to have conversations with all seven folks running for Quincy School Board, and hopefully you will take the time to vote, watch all these interviews, learn a little bit about the candidates, and again, please vote. It's an important election. All elections are important, but school board elections. And also just give a little thanks to these people for running, even if you don't vote for them, because this is a not-for-profit position. You don't get a dime when you're on the school board, so remember that. So anyway, here are the conversations I had with the members of the who are running for the Quincy School Board. Joining me now is Shelley Arns, the president of the Quincy School Board. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good. She is up for reelection coming up on April 4th, one of one of seven people running for four slots, and you just became president of the school board within the last year or so. Talk about that that transition and how you think it's gone.
Well, I tell you, it's never a dull moment. Right. So we made the transition in August. I think we Said had done it for so long, you know, bless him for getting us, you know, just through, I think, eight, maybe eight or nine years of being president. And I think we wanted to have a consistent school year, and so we felt like August was a good transition date before the start of the school year to kind of transition me into that position and then go from there. But we've had lots of exciting times.
You had COVID.
Insurance and
COVID and a new superintendent and all kinds of fun stuff lately.
Not so much COVID this year.
Well, COVID, I'm talking about when you were vice president, before you, you were still on the board and had to deal with all that.
I was. Yeah, right, right.
So going, why do you, why do you want to stay on the school board?
Great question.
The money, right?
Yes, absolutely.
School board members don't get paid anything, by the way, just so you know.
Thank you for clarifying. Yes. No, I mean, when I graduated high school here from Quincy High in 88, I knew I wanted to be a teacher. And so I taught for about 20 years, both in Bloomington Normal and in Quincy. And then when I transitioned into working for my family's business of property rental, I told my dad, I still need to be involved in the schools in some way. And so I was a mentor, and I also joined my son's school PTA, which was junior high at the time. I was always a little jealous of my husband being able to go and, you know, do like the PTA stuff with him at Monroe and at Baldwin and things like that, because I was in my classroom. But I just, it's just always been something important to me to continue. And then when I was asked to run for the board, would be appointed to the board and then run for the school board in 2018 and 19, I just felt like it was something that I could give respect to the position. Being a teacher, I think a lot of my friends encouraged me to, because they appreciate the teacher's voice on on the board. And so I just tried to, I just try to honor that and do the best I can for them.
How many of your former teacher colleagues call you and say, come on, what are you doing?
You know what? They are so nice to me. They really are. And I think they, they trust, that just shows me how much they trust me, and I really appreciate that. But there are every once in a while, you know, there are some times where they're like, like, really? But then I think they know that there has to be a lot of reason behind every decision. And it's, I would never make a willy-nilly decision, never. So they know that there has to be a lot of thought and effort into each decision that's made, and they respect that.
One of the things you did in your tenure was you were a part of the committee that brought in Dr. Pettit to take over. And your presidency, the way you guys coordinated it sort of came along with his superintendent run. Is, are you and the board, how are you, are you comfortable with that decision? Has he lived up to your expectations?
Yeah. So when, when we were going through the whole superintendent search process, a lot of my responsibility was to reach out to other districts where he had worked, where all the candidates had worked, actually. And just in conversations with them, the message I heard over and over again is that he's going to be a superintendent somewhere. And we just knew that if we didn't take that opportunity to hire him, that somebody else was going to. And we, we really didn't want to lose him as an asset to the Quincy team. He, I tell you, being a superintendent is no easy task. I think Roy probably made it look really easy, because he did come in with experience at the superintendency. And so this year has been a very quick learning curve for Dr. Pettit. He has taken every opportunity to learn from, you know, the directors within the district to really get a handle and a grasp on how they're functioning, what's the best use of their time, and how and how we can function in the most efficient way. He is going to be a very strong advocate for curriculum and what's happening in the classroom, and probably a little different approach than Roy. And I think it's time for that. So I think it's a good thing.
One of the issues of that every school board has to deal with, that you deal, the big issue is finances. You've, you've been in pretty good position for a while now, especially with all the influx money of the ARPA money and that you came in. But looking ahead, it's always going to be a challenge. What does the board have to do to make sure that, you know, the ship keeps sailing?
Well, I think the most important thing is that we have a lot of confidence in the person running that ship, which is Ryan Wicker. He has done a fantastic job. I think it was back in maybe 2017 or so, our bond rating was not good. And, and now we're, you know, double A bond rating, which is fantastic. And it's because of his hard work. So we have a lot of trust in his position. He's always very conservative in his estimates, which kind of makes sure that we are moving in a right direction in enough time to do that. But you're, you're right, like March of 2020, you know, we had a referendum on the ballot to help with hiring more support positions around students, which we probably see 10 times more need at this point, you know, coming out of COVID and just all the mental health issues that are going on with our, not only our students, but our staff and, you know, just everyone in our community. I feel like that's a big, a big need right now. So the other thing that's happened since that time are the mandates are getting closer and closer to that time where they have to be in place of the $40,000 teacher salary mandate, $15 hourly mandate. And there's even talk now of a $20 hourly mandate. And the thing is, we're very conscious about communicating with the state and saying, you need to pay this if you want us to be able to, you need to have some funding available to, for us to pass that on. It can't, we can't just generate it from nowhere. We can't charge tuition. The way that we fund our schools primarily, the majority of it, is through property taxes. So that has to change somewhere within the state that they realize if they're mandating money issues, they need to find the money for those issues.
So one of the issues that you have to deal with, when, you know, you talked about the salary increases that are, that are coming, it is teacher, it's teacher retention, but it's also recruiting teachers. And I know Lisa Otten and her staff do a really good job. But what other things can you do to sell Quincy as a good place to come work and live?
Right. And I'm glad you mentioned Lisa, because I feel like Lisa is a big part of that. Lisa Otten, as our human resource director, has done a great job of finding teachers still within their pre-service time, whether student teaching or, you know, learning to become a teacher, and have really reached out to them and encouraged them to apply with Quincy and even offer them positions before they even graduate. And those pre-hires really set us up well for, you know, what's coming down through the next year. And she's been able to really do a great job of filling those positions. I think also our upgrades to our facilities, you know, our new elementary schools, the renovations to our junior high, and even our facilities at high school are a very big draw as well in a way that, you know, teachers see, or, you know, to-be teachers see, that we are invested in our community for education for our students. And we do try to move forward and provide the best possible quality education for our students. So I think those facilities and the way that they're looking is a great draw as well. And then finally, I think the last thing is that we need to support our teachers, period. You know, if we do have an issue with the teacher, instead of blaming and shaming publicly on social media or, or other avenues, you know, we need to go and have conversations. It's, it's not a hard thing to do to sit down one-on-one and explain your viewpoint and be able to come to consensus. And so I think that's really what, as a community, we need to focus on is supporting our teachers, taking issues directly to them if we need to speak with them, and have a polite conversation with them. But also, I love the chance to get into the schools, and I think, you know, all board members probably do. But I love when I have a chance to go in and read to students, or help them release their monarch butterflies in the, in the fall, or, or even, you know, watch a basketball game, football game, concert, musical, whatever it is. I just love getting out there and supporting our students anyway.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. I think, I think you covered it all, Bob.
All right. Well, I think you did too. Shelley Arns, thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks so much.
We'll be right back.
A great night's sleep starts at Harvey's Furniture. Check out the large selection of complete bedroom sets. And when it comes to mattresses, we have a full selection from Vemco, Spring Air, and Chadaman Wells. Harvey's Furniture, our home, your home.
Joining me now is Jim Whitfield, member of the Quincy School Board. Welcome.
Good morning.
You have, you're going for your third term this time around, correct?
Yes, I am. I was elected back in, what, 2014, 2015, just finishing my second term, and thought that really the district is headed in a very good direction. And I want to be, hopefully voters will decide that they want me to represent them for another term.
Your last term, a lot of, a lot of stuff went on. You had to get through COVID, you had to find a new superintendent. How do you feel the district weathered all of that?
You know, I'm going to tell you, Roy Webb really set us in a very good direction. And if it wouldn't have been for Roy Webb, I'm sure we would have been able to get through it. But Roy's very mindful path, his thought process to get us through a very difficult time, has really set this district, I feel, on, on a path to success. Really, we can get back to a normal school year, if you will.
And that's what it really seems like this time around, is the fact that, you know, we got through everything we had to get through with that. But now it really does kind of feel like, hey, we're, we're back to normal now. You know, we had showcase recently and all the other events we're all doing, and we're just kind of back in the flow.
You know, when I first got elected eight years ago, we were right smack dab at the start of going to build these five new grade schools. Bob, I think there's a people in this community that felt there's no way this district is going to be able to build five new grade schools on time and under budget. They felt like, you know what, they're going to have to come back to the voters and ask for another $5 million, another $10 million, $15 million. Guess what? We were on time, we were under budget. We got through that, we moved 450 teachers from their old classrooms to new classrooms. That was a logistical nightmare. But Roy put a very good plan together, and then we ran into COVID for three years. I want to be able to be a school board member where I'm worrying about teacher retention. I want to be a school board member that is looking forward at curriculum and really setting up students for success as we move forward. We're done with the construction, we're done with COVID. Let's just have a normal school year.
Also, along those lines, when, when you talk about the, the normal school year process, there are a lot of talk about board members' interactions and how you serve as a board member. Is it your view to go more macro level, or do you, are there some things you look at at the micro level and say, hey, let's get into this a little more?
Okay. People may not know this, but technically, the school board, and be it Quincy, or Springfield, or Mendon, or Rockford, technically, the school board has one job and one job only. That's to hire and fire the superintendent. We can give our thoughts to the superintendent, we can give some direction to the superintendent. But you know what, superintendents are paid a good salary. And it's up to them to decide how they want to proceed to accomplish the mission that we set forth in front of them as a board. So I just feel that I have a day job, just like many of the other school board members. I don't have time to sit at the board office, day in and day out, and basically be a micromanager and have an office next door to Dr. Pettit's office and telling him what to do every single day.
Well, I tell you what, there are a lot of school boards out there, we see this all the time, where, you know, they get involved in coaches, firings and hirings and all that. I think if you have a philosophy to let your guy who you hire run the district, that would seem to be the best philosophy.
You know, it is. And, you know, Roy Webb did a marvelous job for the time that he was here. And Dr. Pettit is the time, is the man that we need for this time to take us as we move forward. Dr. Pettit is a great individual. He truly cares about his staff. He cares about the community. He cares about children and students. And I look forward to working with him. Hopefully, if voters say yes to me, I look forward to working with him for the next four years.
Finances are always a fun topic. You know, it's been, it's been pretty solid lately. And I know that there was a big boost in some of the revenues from, from the ARPA money and things like that. Looking at the future, how important is it to have good relations with your, for board members to be in dialogue with folks over in Springfield to make sure, hey, we need to make sure we're getting our fair share?
We need to have a constant communication with our local representatives, the state senators, the state representatives. I know Jill Tracy, Randy Fries, there are other state representatives as well that, that cover parts of this territory that people are seeing. But we need to make sure that Springfield is well aware that the cut in funding is not an option. State of Illinois is moving in a different direction as far as finances are concerned. I just saw what recently that the bond rating has gone up for the state of Illinois. How that bond rating would play locally, I don't think there's much of a, of an impact on that. But we always need to let our state representatives know how critical it is for state funding and to continue in a positive way and not cut state funding for local schools.
And the governor has proposed in the next budget, a boost in, in higher ed funding all the way around, so.
That's a good thing. That's definitely a good thing.
Anything else you'd like to add?
You know, I just have to say that we, you know, a lot of people were, got excited a few years ago, a couple of years ago, when we had the whole mask thing. I voted no on the mask issue. We had a good plan in place, Bob, before the mandatory mask edict came down from the governor's office. It was mask optional. People were like, okay, you know what, we can live with that. Were they happy about it? No. But you know what, we all were like, okay, let's just try to make do with what we've got. And then that mandatory mask thing came down, and it really, I felt was an overreach. You can't paint every single school district in the entire state of Illinois with the same brush. Because what works in Freeport is not going to work in Cairo. And what works in Quincy might not work in Effingham, and Waukegan might not be in Springfield. You elect board members to make decisions on the local level. And we talked with our local healthcare providers, the health departments, and Roy Webb, and we had a really good plan in place. And then all of a sudden, it was a mandatory mask. And I just feel, I did not want to put the Quincy School District in a position that would possibly jeopardize funding. Quincy, believe it or not, nobody, not a lot of people realize this, Bob, but Quincy is one of the 50 largest districts in the entire state of Illinois. We are what's called a looted district. And if you have a looted district that is bucking the governor, then you know what, he might make an example out of you. And I just didn't feel like that was something that the school district should try and do at that time. But you know what, we're through it, we're headed in a good direction. And I just feel like right now, I would just ask folks to consider voting for Jim Whitfield for Quincy School Board.
Jim Whitfield, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll be right back.
A great night's sleep starts at Harvey's Furniture. Check out the large selection of complete bedroom sets. And when it comes to mattresses, we have a full selection from Vemco, Spring Air, and Chadaman Wells. Harvey's Furniture, our home, your home.
And welcome back. My guest is Curtis Sefler, and he is running for the Quincy School Board. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Welcome. Thank you.
You are not an incumbent. You are running for the board for the first time. What inspired you to run for Quincy School Board?
Yeah. So, gosh, almost 10 years ago now, I got involved with an organization called Young Life here in town. I came from a career in construction, was volunteering with Young Life for a couple of years. Actually, had the opportunity to leave construction, leave plumbing. The company I worked for, you know, construction and plumbing is a pretty lucrative career here. Had the opportunity to leave that and go into the nonprofit world and really saw the difference between, personally, the difference between significance and success, and decided I wanted to have a bigger impact with kids' lives impacting youth. So started working for Young Life then. And since that time, I've really seen the needs of kids and educators continue to grow through our partnerships with Quincy Public Schools. I thought and prayed just for a bigger role and how to have a larger impact in that. And, you know, knowing that school board elections were coming up, this is something I'd applied for when there were appointments in the past. And then when the election was coming up, this was kind of a no-brainer for me.
This is also a situation, when you're talking about just, you know, work, you work with children already, and now having this other chance to not work with them per se, but still, this gives you a large voice to, to kind of dictate not only the children's future, but, but really, in a sense, the community's future.
Right. You know, so much of, I mean, kids are the future, right? I think all of us can see just issues in education on, on a local level, but on a global level, too. We see things that we would like to change. We also see things that we've done well. And, you know, knowing the specific needs of students and how quickly culture changes, you know, I'm someone who's uniquely drawn into youth culture. Like, that's the space that I live in daily, where kids are at, what they're doing, whether it's through Young Life or through mentoring at the school. I'm a person who's intimately involved in student life and want to be able to, to help in any way that I can there.
In, in running for this position and in talking to people who've either encouraged you or asked you what you were thinking in doing this.
Yeah.
What are, what is your, as you walk into possibly sitting on this board, what are some of your current perceptions of the Quincy School District in general?
I, I love that we were one of the only districts that were open all through COVID. I know that there's, you know, beliefs in different ways, and I hate being told what to do, just like everybody else does. I am just incredibly proud of this community for keeping schools open, for keeping kids in session. We did the same thing through Young Life. We talked to the health department daily, what do we have to do to keep kids in session, to keep kids meeting? Because the social, social dynamics and the mental health issues that we're seeing now as a result of isolation are only going to continue to grow. So keeping kids together, to me, is just a super important thing. And I think our board did a great job with that. And I think for a lot of us to be able to sit on the outside, not knowing specifically what, what they had to deal with, you know, the minutia of the information they were dealing with, like, is, is probably an unfair assessment. I, like, I'm incredibly proud of Quincy Public Schools. I've got three kids that are in it, love what, what they get to experience. I think personally, things that I maybe struggle with are graduation gap, you know, that we have a significant difference in, in graduation rate between white students and students of color. We are, I'm from a multiracial family, like, we have, we've adopted our middle daughter. So racial issues are huge for us. Bullying is a huge issue for us. So knowing that, that those are core issues that a lot of other parents are dealing with, too, are, you know, a lot of things that I hope to be able to address. Chirurgies is another one, and that's largely, again, students of color and, you know, disproportionately poor kids. And we want to be able to, to facilitate resolution in there, to make sure every student has an incredible experience at Quincy Public Schools.
With your construction background, you know, the district just finished wrapping up a project, which we have brand-new schools basically all over. But there's still always things to be done. There is a building committee. Also running a business, there's a finance committee. Do you think you can bring your tools to the table for some of these things to make a difference as well?
Absolutely. I think my career in construction definitely speaks to the building committee, being a local business owner, and what I've, what we've done through Young Life also. Like, Young Life, we've quadrupled our budget in the last four years. We've stayed in the black nearly all of those years minus COVID, but had enough cash on hand to where we're still, still completely financially viable, and our staff and our impact are continuing to grow as an organization. So I think the financial piece and the building piece are, again, skillsets that I bring to the table in school board.
You are still involved in some other businesses as well, correct?
Yeah. I'm one of the owners of Quincy Axe Company, Experience Quincy, and Just Tasking here locally. We've got our building pretty much under construction, front and back right now, with the tuck pointing, getting wrapped up on the backside, and the awning is off the front side getting redone now. So we're really just excited about what we're able to bring to the community there also.
So you got a lot of stuff going on, you still want to be on school board?
Yeah. I, I had a, someone in the community years ago, and he was on a lot of boards. And I asked him, like, how do you do so much? And he said, the more you do, the more you realize you can do. And that, that has stuck with me. And I think, you know, I'm incredibly blessed to have a unique skillset that encompasses a lot of things, and a lot of things that I think I am really good at, and I think others would testify to that, too. And, you know, part of that is just being able to unite people, bring people together. Like, I don't, I don't really play politics, and I know the school board's nonpartisan. I think that we are better when we have conversations. We sit and have this, and we actually discuss ideas. I don't think really a lot of us are that far apart. It's really just all in how we approach conversation with each other. And, you know, I think that discernment and that, that ability to communicate and build true community in a variety of avenues is something that's going to be, again, just something uniquely I bring to the school board.
Anything else you'd like to add today?
Really, just thanks for having me in here. Like, this is a cool opportunity to be able to speak, you know, and just be able to kind of share my heart and where I'm at and why I'm running. So I think, you know, again, would appreciate everyone's vote as we, as we get into this, and just thank you.
All right. Curtis Sefler, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We'll be right back.
A great night's sleep starts at Harvey's Furniture. Check out the large selection of complete bedroom sets. And when it comes to mattresses, we have a full selection from Vemco, Spring Air, and Chadaman Wells. Harvey's Furniture, our home, your home.
Hello, everybody. I'm Bob Goff with Muddy River News. And today, we're talking to three candidates for the Quincy School Board, and it's Jeremy Allen, Ashley Randolph, and Tori Kaufman. Thanks for stopping by, guys.
Hi, Bob.
Thanks for having us.
Well, again, you are running for Quincy School Board, the election coming up here on April 4th, and you guys are, are running as a slate of candidates. And one of the things I just want to talk about is, is what, why is it important for, for you to run and try to gain a seat on the Quincy School Board? Jeremy, you start first.
Well, it's pretty simple, Bob. I believe in education, not indoctrination. I believe in fiscal responsibility. I believe in open communication between parents and board members, parents, board members, and teachers, all for the sake of the children. And I believe that, you know, we can, we can do better. We really can.
Ashley, why, why are you running for Quincy School Board?
So I'm running for school board because of a million different reasons. But some specific ones are just, I have four daughters. Being a single mom, it's been very tough. And it takes a team. It takes a village, you know. And I haven't seen a whole lot of transparency over the years. And I feel like with the three of us running together, we are very open, and we're honest, and we have a heart for our children and our, our future of our community. And there's just so many reasons why I want, what I, why I want to be a part of that team.
Tori, why are you running for Quincy School Board?
Thanks, Bob. I'm running for Quincy School Board. I am a single parent. My daughter's at junior high, had great experiences with QPS. I think I can bring a lot to the table. I am totally for local control and for our, you know, medical freedom, for our students, faculty and staff. And I was one of the vocal people last few years, standing up for that, standing up for rights. And I felt like it was the right time to get involved and just bring what I can to the table. And I think we can be a lot more transparent on a lot of issues. And I would just be a great advocate on that board for parents and our teachers and students.
Ashley, Tori just talked about the health situation. You're a nurse, correct?
Correct.
So you, when, when you were observing the school district as a nurse, what were some of the things that, that concerned you regarding the situation when the school district was having to deal with the pandemic?
Sure. Well, I will say that all of my, you know, own beliefs and suggestions about anything medical does not reflect my, my job with who I work for. So, but it reflects me, it did hit home. I'm a parent, you know, first of all. Being a nurse, I'm educated on everything that's going on in the community and worldwide. And when it hit home that we were going to have to be submissive and lose our medical freedom, that bothered me hugely.
Jeremy, you were also spoken, I remember you speaking at a couple of school board meetings with Tori, too, over that whole situation. Was that one of the reasons that kind of made you say, okay, I, I want to take a more active role in this?
Absolutely, Bob. My wife, being a physician here locally, treated over 2,000 people for COVID. Not one person died, not one person ended up in the hospital. There were treatments, there were protocols to follow, although that's not what we heard in the nightly news. The propaganda was just ridiculous. And I went to the board and explained to them, listen, I have firsthand experience. I hear about this every night. My wife's on the front lines. I know exactly what to do. This is working. These medicines do work. And here, masks don't work. It's like taking a handful of sand and throwing it at a volleyball net. That's, that's the equivalent of these masks, except for that, it destroys the kid's ability to learn. They can't see facial expressions. It's, it just makes life really rough. And they didn't help. They didn't help at all. As a matter of fact, they hurt. They hold bad bacteria in, and that's even worse. So I did, I went to the school board meeting and spoke up. Hadn't planned on speaking, was not my intentional, is not my intention. I, I even told them, the first thing I said was, I don't have a dog in this fight. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, we all have a dog in this fight. This is our future. These kids are our future. And if we don't stand up for them right now, who will? If we don't stand up now, if we don't take a stand, if we don't start fighting for these kids, then we don't have a city in 20 years. We don't have a country in 30 or 40 years. I mean, this is, this is it. If we don't stand now, we never will.
Tori, when you, in terms of leadership, and in terms of being on a board like this, a lot of school boards sometimes take a macro view and really don't want to be accused of micromanaging and saying, okay, we're going to determine what books are in the library and things like that. What, what is your view in trying to work with the administration in developing policies for a school district?
I am big on letting people like Dr. Pettit and our principals do their job. They don't need to be looking over their shoulders. They got enough mandates on them. So I am for freedom for them, you know, to do their jobs. They are the experts. If you drill down a little bit, I am for more board involvement on things like bullying and things. Just from being on the campaign trail, first time doing this, a lot of people have brought up, probably 90% of the questions and comments about what are you going to do about bullying? Because it seems to be kind of an overarching issue at QPS. So, and I've said, well, what I would do differently, what, what people have told me is that they reach out to the board members, they say, that they reach out to the board members, they say, we'll get back to you, and then nothing ever happens. So I think you then, as a school board member, have to reach out directly to the principal, use your position to call them and ask them, you know, tell them what's going on with the situation, and then ask them to report back to you so you can get back to that parent. So I think one of the things that I have heard the most is that whether you're at a board meeting or emailing or something, there's not much communication. I think we can really improve on that, but it takes somebody who's going to have a backbone and take the time to do it and really make that a priority, and I would do that.
Ashley, when you talk to people during this campaign, what is the issue that they talk to you about and say, I'm glad you're running for school board, do something about this? What do people want to know about?
Sure. Some specific concerns have been discipline and accountability for all Quincy Public School staff, goes all the way up to leadership and all the way to our children that attend every day, you know? That and truancy. There's no accountability. Kids aren't being disciplined. They may write a referral, but the referral is kind of like thrown under the table. You know, it disappears. The kid still comes to school, you know, as they do. And then there's just no accountability and discipline right now in all the schools. And junior high is the biggest one right now. And there's a lot of children that are just out of control. And even the teachers, they're not held accountable. And I think that comes to the board level that somewhere the board is missing. You know, either education, communication, something.
Well, you know, back in the day when we were all a little bit younger, you know, they could obviously discipline you a little more with the paddling or what have you. Obviously, that is kind of thrown out the door these days. So, but you're right in terms of that. It's like teachers and administrators, they need to be given a little more freedom to deal with these situations. Because in this thing, I mean, Jeremy, I don't know if you agree with that, but it seems like their hands are probably tied in some cases.
Well, I wish I knew. That's a great thing for us to find out once we're elected, to find out what the law states, what can actually be done to help remedy this situation. And until we're in and elected, we won't know those things.
And to continue and follow up with each case, you know? Each case is going to need to be handled a little differently, but there also needs to be steps that every person should be accountable for, and it should follow those steps. It definitely needs to come back to the table.
And I think that's one thing that you will find out, because I know at school board meetings, they will go into closed session and discuss certain disciplinary actions. So I think that's one thing that you will be able to have a pretty big say in, and that's important.
Another thing, Bob, is the teachers, I don't know if it's just teachers, but their pay. They are very upset. Of course, the economy's taken a dive, and taxes have risen. And, you know, most married households can't barely afford their home because their taxes are so high, and they're not getting paid very much. And even if you compare Quincy to, like, Carbondale or any of the other cities, you know, around us, they aren't close to a lot of their salaries, so.
That's been a, that's certainly been a point of contention for a lot of years. That brings us up to one other issue, which of course is state funding. And property taxes are high. The state has always said they want to offer property tax relief, but it is difficult in this day and age when those things are tied together. I know not everybody in Quincy is the biggest fan of the current, the state, current state government, the state administration, but there are people you're going to have to work with. So you're going to have to, Tori, you know, do you feel you can put aside your differences to say, okay, talk to the people in Springfield and say, hey, this is, we need more help?
We absolutely have to put aside our differences because it is for our kids and our community. The one thing the governor did this week was announce a $70 million initiative to try and fill some of these teacher shortages and whatnot. So I applaud him for that. I think, you know, if you can't say something good about somebody, then you probably shouldn't say anything at all. I do believe that the governor cares about education, but, so we would have to work together. But he, you know, has policies I disagree with. But I think on things like teachers' pay and whatnot like that, we have to work together. We are a highly taxed state and an area. If you look at your real estate tax bill for Quincy, it's very high. It's, you know, QPS gets the biggest portion of that. 2020, the referendum that the board put forth failed at a high level. I think it was, you know, 5743, something like that. So the appetite of the voters to fund a new referendum, to bring more funding in, does not seem to be there. That's not something I would really push for myself. But yeah, we will have to work together.
Well, that also comes back to the funding that Quincy Public School do receive every year and ways that we can save, you know?
That's the biggest question I get asked.
Yeah.
The budget.
Is, well, what can you do to prevent teacher turnover? And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but the answer is, you have to throw money at that. You have to pay these teachers what they're worth. You have to pay the support staff what they're worth. And only then are they going to be satisfied and happy, everyday teaching. And if you have happy teachers, then you have happy students. And if you have happy students, they want to come to school. They want to learn. And that's where we have to be. Now, the way to get there is not to raise taxes. We have funds set aside for certain projects, certain things, and that's okay. That's fine. But as a mechanical engineer, I've been trained to do cost analysis with good payback. I mean, if it doesn't have a payback, we don't do the project. So I figured out several ways, even before being elected, that we could take money from this avenue and apply it creatively and put money right back into the general budget. But people aren't thinking about these things. They don't think about that. We could put almost a million dollars back in the general budget in the first year from the projects that Ashley and I have discussed outside of these meetings, but.
And Tori.
It's, and Tori, it's not that hard. It just takes, it just takes a little bit of creative thinking. And instead of sledgehammer spending, we need to start using a scalpel, and we need to do it very skillfully.
It's something else, though, that you think that could be looked at is also, there's also been a dichotomy over the years in administrative salaries and administrative costs versus boots-on-the-ground teacher costs. That's something, is there, there are probably some things to look at there, aren't there?
I don't know. We haven't gotten that far. We get to look behind the curtain. I'm sure I'll have a whole lot more ideas of how we can creatively spend money to put money back in the general budget every year.
And I think that kind of goes back to why we're running also is more transparency. We, our opponents, do put a lot of things on their flyers and whatnot about transparency and local control. But when push came to shove, they ceded their local control the last three years. And the transparency is, looks good on a flyer, but it just doesn't seem to happen. Board meetings you go to, if a parent says something, can be passionate about something. If you take time out of your evening, you should, you should have a, be able to have a conversation in the open with the board, and that just doesn't happen.
They didn't even acknowledge we spoke to them. Half the time when we went to these board meetings, they literally just did everything but look at you when you spoke to them.
And one thing I've noticed about, I cover a lot of public meetings in my, when I do here at Muddy River News, and it's great to have a quick meeting a lot of times, but a lot of times, there needs to be discussion, and there needs to be open discussion amongst the board members on certain projects and what. Now, you go to committee meetings, and they're great. Their committee meetings are, there's always great discussion. And I get the fact that, okay, we're going to do all this heavy lifting in committee and then get it done quickly at the board level. But still, and again, that's a good thing, because those committee meetings are very informative when you go to those. But then the board meeting, you know, it's usually like, okay, if the committee recommends it, okay. But I know there are going to be situations in a lot of other governmental bodies where it's like, well, hey, I don't, I'm not on the finance committee, but I think the finance committee shouldn't have done that. And then those are, those are some good discussions to have, which you see. And again, people will look at that and say, well, we don't want RANCOR, or we don't want whatever. Well, there needs to be a healthy, robust discussion of government at public meetings in order to make, that's how the thing works. Not everything should be a rubber stamp. And I know that there were a couple, there were some board members who did vote in opposition to a couple of the mandates now, as we went on down the road. But again, I think when, and again, a lot of boards were guilty of, you know, guilty is a bad word, because, I mean, it's, again, we, none of us knew what the hell was going on when COVID first hit. We were all just like, okay, let's all hunker down, and let's all just kind of figure this out. But then gradually, everybody sort of started to figure it out. But then it got to a point where, well, why are we still, why still wearing a mask? Why are they still separated? Why are we doing this? Now, it's got to the point where people, even people who I think had that point of view, were like, okay, that was, like you said, the mask thing, eh, we kind of went overboard on that.
Well, and I mean, what happened was, I was one of the plaintiffs against QPS with that suit with Tom DeBoer. And we kept hearing from the administration for two years that, you know, we're following the science with CDC saying. And we just said, we want the right as their parent. It should be up to us whether they wear a mask or not. If you want your child to, or your teacher wants to, that's perfectly fine. But give us the freedom to make our decision, which is our right. And they said, follow the science for so long. And then when we won our lawsuit, all that that lawsuit did was free our children if we wanted them to not wear a mask, and all of a sudden, everybody took their mask off. It was like, well, the science didn't change. We just won a lawsuit. So what exactly, you can't have it both ways. Can't say, you know, so, yep. We'll work with, if all three of us get on the board, if two of us, one of us, we're going to have to work with four other people and, or five or six. And I just bring a lot of common sense, a heartfelt, you know, I want to serve. I want to do what's right for our kids. I want to be an advocate for medical freedom within this school board and just get back to parents when they have concerns. And I think just bring common sense and decency and transparency. We use that word a lot, but it just really can improve. And we, you know, we haven't had great leadership there the last few years, so we need some new leadership, I believe.
We'll be right back.
A great night's sleep starts at Harvey's Furniture. Check out the large selection of complete bedroom sets. And when it comes to mattresses, we have a full selection from Bemco, Spring Air, and Chadman Wells. Harvey's Furniture, our home, your home.
Welcome back. We are talking to Latonya Brock, member of the Quincy School Board. Thanks for stopping by.
Thank you for having me.
You are running for your first election because you were filling the appointed position when Mayor Trop won his election in the city, right?
Absolutely.
What have you enjoyed about your time on the school board so far?
Well, when I came on the school board, it was May of '21, so it was certainly an interesting time. I was at the chamber during that time, so I was familiar with some of the issues and things going around COVID and the possible mandates that were coming down. And so, and also leading the Rotary Chamber. And so, when I initially came on, I didn't expect to have to make so many tough decisions in that climate, right? But I've certainly enjoyed the camaraderie. I've enjoyed our teamwork. I have enjoyed really working through some tough issues for our students and our educators with the current board members. And I will say this, people think that we often agree on everything. We do not. We have some passionate conversations, you know, in executive sessions. And so when we come out, we certainly are, we're better for it. But I think that the other things that I am beginning to enjoy is really getting to do school board work.
When you look at the overall picture and trying to deal with this and the finances and everything and the state mandates, what are some of the things that you think that the district can improve upon?
That is a great question. And so when I think about that, the mandates and the funding, I certainly think, when I think, big picture, I think about our truancy numbers. I think about the mental health. I also think about, as we look at what we're facing with finances, we're certainly going to have to be creative. We're going to have to be transparent with taxpayers. And I think one of the big things that we will be able to at least talk about now that we have some other things behind us is, are there other ways that we can get funding? For example, we know that the funding comes from homeowners, correct? And so is there another way for us to really, we talk about inclusion, but how can we include everyone? And everyone having skin in the game when it comes to finances for our school board? And so that's one thing that we're starting to think about and look at some other ways as well.
You, like you said, when you became on the board, you were director of the chamber, but now you're working another job right now. Is your, how's your availability? Or you feel you're like, okay, I can, I will make the time for this?
What is availability?
Exactly, right?
So that was a great question. What is availability? I absolutely feel like my schedule now, I have more autonomy. And so I'm not working in an office every day, eight to five or eight to 10 p.m., right? And so that I'm able to put board meetings and those type of things on my calendar, and I'm able to make some room and some concessions when I need to do some special meetings. So I feel like I have, I won't say more time. My time is allotted differently now. And I think, I believe that I have more control over my time than I do with the chamber.
I think anytime you want to, you know, when you look at doing public service, that's something that, it's a passion for a lot of people. It's been a passion for you because, again, the chamber role and the other positions you've had. But looking at this, I don't think there's any more important public service job in our community than school board.
I certainly think that it is a vital role. And I think that's something that our community hopefully is looking at during this time. A lot of people, and I have been canvassing, have really, some people say, well, I don't have kids at school. Well, it still affects you. It still affects the community. And the importance of the role, and you said it best, it is one of the most important roles, I think, that I've ever served in, in a volunteer position. And so it certainly is important. When you think about education, you're not only thinking about now, you're thinking about future generations. You're thinking about workforce. How are we preparing them to show up in the workforce? Are we preparing them to take the next level, whether it's college, whether it's a job, whether it's a different path for them? And so we certainly not have to be creative, but we have to be intentional that we are helping to do the right thing as board members, to continue to put forth great students and great people that's going to contribute to the community and society at large.
And it's so important because it's not just, you know, we all have the high flyers, the kids who are in athletics, or the kids who are in music, or whatever. You know, a school board member has to be concerned about every child who walks through that door.
We do. We do. I often think about, what's the definition of all? It's all, right? And so that's what we have to be concerned about, high-performance students, students that are not performing well, students that need different environments, different situations, different, students that need different things, students that come from different backgrounds, students, like you said, that may be good at sport. Some students don't have an interest in sport. And so we really do have to be concerned with all of our students and where they're at. And that's a, that's a high-functioning job, but it's also a very intense. And you certainly have to be passionate about the education.
Is this the first time you've run for an office, so the door-to-door and the whole thing?
Yes, it is.
Because you talked about going canvassing, so do you have comfortable shoes for that?
I do. I do. I do. I'm so glad that a friend of mine bought me a pair of Nike, Air, Air Nikes or whatever.
There you go, yeah. Helps a lot.
Oh, my God, they are amazing. But yeah, and I also realize that I'm out of shape. But yeah, but yeah, I've got to, I got to meet some really cool people, and people have been open to conversation and asking some of those hard questions. But I appreciate that I get to answer those for them.
Well, and it's funny, the thing, of course, is, as you brought up earlier, with a, someone who says, well, I don't have kids in school anymore, but if you own a house, more than 50% of that property tax bill is going to the school district. So you ought to care what's going on.
Yes, you should. And I think that that's the piece that some of our community is missing, that I do own my house, and I do, I should care. And not only should I care because I have skin in the game and I'm paying for it, but I also should care because these are the people that's going to be our future leaders. These could potentially be my future neighbors. They could potentially work for the businesses that I own. They could potentially work for the businesses here as well. So it's a lot to, it's a lot more than, I don't have kids in the school district.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I would just like to add that I do want everyone to really consider each candidate. Look at us individually and collectively. I know we had to make some tough decisions during COVID, and I will certainly say that no one wants to have to make that decision. But when you think about what's good for, back to that word, all, we did the best that we could and what we thought would be best for our students and our educators. A lot of people thought that COVID did not affect students at the rate that it did adults. And that is true. That was true. But we have to keep in mind that they were exposed to adults with some of those issues. And at the end of the day, we got to remember that this is about our kids and our community. And so I hope that we keep that facing forward.
Latonya Brock, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be right back.
A great night's sleep starts at Harvey's Furniture. Check out the large selection of complete bedroom sets. And when it comes to mattresses, we have a full selection from Bemco, Spring Air, and Chadman Wells. Harvey's Furniture, our home, your home.
Well, I hope you were able to enjoy and learn a little bit about the seven people running for Quincy School Board. There are four open seats, so you will vote for four of the seven members when you go to the ballot box on April 4th, or if you mail in or vote early. You know how we do things these days. So, but anyway, once again, please take the time to vote. School board elections are as important as any other elections, because our kids are as important as anything else. So, anyway, I'm Bob Goff. Thanks for watching.